Buenas tardes y bienvenidos a la Escuela de Derecho de la U.S. de la Universidad de Baltimore. Este evento fue posible gracias al apoyo generoso del oficio del jefe de la Cámara, el oficio del director, las escuelas de derecho, educación, social welfare, asuntos públicos y administración, la Universidad de la Religión y las Relaciones, el Centro de Humanidades y el Instituto de Políticas y Investigación Social. Hoy estamos aquí para commemorar el marco de la ley en la Cámara Suprema de Estados Unidos que se adoptó hace más de 60 años, cuando justo por la calle en Topeka, Kansas, Oliver Ryan demandó a la Junta de Educación, Shawn E. Countan y el estado de Kansas por no permitirle a su hijo acceder a la escuela de educación en blanco cercana a su hogar. Este caso se abordó con el propósito de protección igual en la Ley 14. Los argumentos jurídicos ante la Corte demuestraron que había un gran desacuerdo sobre el significado y implicaciones de esta ley post-Ciudadia. Por un lado, había el entonces abogado de derechos civiles, Very Good Marshall, en nombre de los apelados, defendiendo una interpretación amplia que él argumentaba que prescribía todas las formas de la subordinación racial sponsorizada por el estado. Por otro lado, había el abogado general de Kansas, Paul Wilson, en nombre de los apelados, defendiendo un acuerdo que él argumentaba que estaba consistente con dejar que el acuerdo entre Plessy y Plessy permanezca legalmente igual. Quizás debido al hecho de que el juez general Warren era un político de carrera que pensó que era importante para la nación alcanzar una decisión humanista en el caso, la Cámara Suprema se detuvió de resolver el debate filosófico sobre el significado de la protección igual. La Corte afirmó: "En acercarse a este problema, no podemos volver el reloj a 1868, cuando se adoptó la ley, o incluso a 1896, cuando se escribió Plessy vs. Ferguson. Deben considerar la educación pública en la luz de su desarrollo completo y su lugar actual en la vida americana en la nación. Solo de esta manera se puede determinar si la segregación en las escuelas públicas priva a estos plenarios de la protección igual de las leyes." Desde este punto de vista, dependiendo de la autoridad de datos empíricos, la Corte mantuvo que "separado" no podía ser igual porque esto era perjudicial para niños negros, y con eso, Plessy, que había sido el ley de la tierra desde 1896, fue derrochado. Algunas cosas han cambiado y algunas cosas han permanecido las mismas desde la decisión de Brown en 1954 y la revolución de los derechos civiles que ha seguido. Una importancia ha cambiado de argumentar por el daño de la clasificación racial que subordinan a argumentar por los beneficios de la acción de acción consciente de raza para servir un interés compellente en la diversidad. Hoy nos alegra tener con nosotros a Lee Bolinger, presidente de Columbia University, quien fue presidente de la Universidad de Michigan, jugando un papel pivotal en poner este argumento de diversidad ante la Corte en Gruder vs. Bolinger y Graz vs. Bolinger. La diversidad ofrece un plan de acción para construir comunidades y expandir oportunidades. Aquí agradeciendo y presentando al presidente Bolinger es nuestro visionario jefe, Bernadette Ray Loo, quien ha convertido la construcción de comunidades y la expansión de oportunidades en un pilar de las aspiraciones de la U.S. de la Escuela de Derecho de la U.S.
Buenas tardes. Y tengo que decir que es mi placer acompañarte esta tarde para este simposio, que marca el aniversario sexto de Brown vs. Board. Y lo hace al mirar un tema importante de nuestro tiempo: la desigualdad. Brown vs. Board afirmó que la separación legislativa no era igual, quizás nunca podría ser igual. Fue una ley marco y el impulso para una igualdad legal completa para todos los estadounidenses. Las implicaciones de esa ley eran más allá de alcanzar, quizás, lo que nadie imaginaba, proporcionando la base para los siguientes esfuerzos por los derechos civiles para los afroestadounidenses y mujeres en este país, y es a menudo credito como ser un elemento clave en la lucha contra el apartheid en Sudáfrica. Y de muchas maneras, era adecuado que esta ley fuera impulsada por un caso de Kansas, un estado fundado por settlers que habían adquirido la esclavitud y que estaban dispuestos a luchar y morir por esa creencia. El impulso para la igualdad continúa hoy en la nación y aquí también en la Universidad de Kansas. Desde su fundación, la universidad estaba abierta a todos, en palabras, en principios y en políticas, si no en términos de verdad. Barcos que existieron aquí durante décadas que debieron bajar, como ha sido el caso en la nación. Aunque tenemos muchos logros que orgullosos de, el hecho es que todavía queda mucho que se debe hacer. Uno de los logros que podemos señalar localmente es que nuestra clase de novatos ha establecido nuevos records para la diversidad cada año en los últimos seis años. Pero, de nuevo, mucho queda que se debe lograr. Justo como tenemos una mayor diversidad en los estudiantes admitidos, también tenemos que continuar nuestro trabajo para asegurar que establezcamos recordes para la diversidad en los graduados así como en las admisiones. El despliegue que todos sabemos de todo es ilustrativo de la desigualdad que Estados Unidos todavía experimenta hoy en día, la desigualdad que supone la nación así como el seguimiento de individuos. Legalmente, los estudiantes tienen la oportunidad igual de acceder a la universidad, pero esa igualdad legal legal cubre todos los tipos de desigualdades, grandes y pequeñas, que conspiran para resultar en estudiantes negros, latinos y nativos americanos graduándose a menores tasas de probabilidad que sus compañeros blancos. Desde las escuelas públicas que están llenas de recursos hasta las desigualdades de salud que sistematicamente los detienen, estos estudiantes enfrentan un campo de juego que no es en absoluto un nivel. Mi hermana y yo nos preguntamos recientemente si quizás hemos crecido en lo que era la época de la oportunidad oro, un momento en el que cada par de años, cada cinco a diez años, las cosas parecían estar mejor, aunque hubieran tenido dificultades o problemas, había un sentimiento de mejora. Y me pregunto si yo o mi familia sería capaz de hacer el mismo viaje ahora que hemos hecho en los años sesenta y setenta. La desigualdad que estamos viendo hoy en día se cumple no solo con los sueños avanzados de Martin Luther King, pero también de muchos otros líderes de derechos civiles, pero también en contraria al sueño americano y un sueño que probablemente debería recompensar las aspiraciones y el trabajo. Así que mientras el título de este simposio impone que estamos en un mundo post-derechos, creo que necesitamos un nuevo movimiento de derechos civiles, uno dedicado a ajustar duro la igualdad legal con la verdadera oportunidad de igualdad para los estadounidenses. Un activista principal para esas oportunidades es nuestro orador principal, el presidente Lee C. Bolinger de Columbia University. El presidente Bolinger es el 19° presidente de Columbia y su primer profesor de la ley. Es un notor de la primera enmienda y comparte su tesis con estudiantes y graduados enseñando un curso sobre libertad de expresión y prensa cada año. El presidente Bolinger también es un activista frecuente por la importancia de la diversidad racial, cultural y social y económica en la sociedad americana y en las universidades estadounidenses. Es mi gran placer invitárselo. Por favor, invídense y invitémoselo a la Universidad de Kansas.
Muchas gracias. Es un placer real estar aquí. Quiero agradecer al jefe de la Cámara por estar aquí. Estoy muy atento a todos los... No respondas, es mi trabajo. En otras palabras, tienes que encender esto. Así que estoy muy atento a cuán difícil es encontrar tiempo para sentarse en una conferencia y realmente lo aprecio mucho. Y sucede que lo que dijo el jefe de la Cámara es realmente mi punto final, que es la necesidad de un nuevo movimiento de derechos civiles. Así que espero darle un poco de contexto a eso y también gracias al profesor Darby por organizar esto y haberme conocido. Lo que me gustaría hacer hoy es realmente tres cosas. Me gustaría llevarte los casos porque creo que esos casos son la fundación de tanto en la vida americana que es admirable. Y quiero hacer el argumento, y tienes que entender que soy principalmente un activista en este área, casi exclusivamente un activista, ya que fui demandado en Italia y también ya que fui el presidente de Michigan cuando ese caso fue iniciado, por supuesto. Pero creo en estos resultados y creo que son increíblemente importantes y creo que hay algún riesgo de que puedan perder el poder. Así que quiero pasar por los casos y quiero explicar cómo llegamos a donde estamos hoy. Después quiero hablar de algunos de los temas que se hacen hoy con respecto a la acción afirmativa y la diversidad. Y luego quiero cerrar con una tesis, un tema, sobre la necesidad de un nuevo movimiento de derechos civiles y, importante, conectar una mentalidad de derechos civiles con lo que estamos haciendo en instituciones educativas con el concepto de diversidad. Así que esas son las tres cosas. Esto se trata... ¿Esto se me ocurre? ¿Estoy bien en esto? ¿O hay una desagüe? Está bien. Esto celebra 60 años de la apoyo de Brown a la educación y, en mi opinión, este es el gran caso, la gran decisión del siglo XX. Y quiero decir algo sobre eso, pero déjame comenzar diciendo que una de las cosas que cualquier de nosotros que estemos conectados a Columbia University siente cuando Brown fue levantado es el extraordinario número de profesores y graduados de Columbia que participaron en la gran decisión en Brown vs. Board de Educación. Jack Greenberg, Constance Baker, Motley, juez Carter. Quiero decir, hay tantas personas que jugaron roles pivotales en Brown. Y así, cada vez que piensas en Brown, NACP, Fund de Defensa Legal, el NACP, piensas en los siguientes casos y el movimiento de derechos civiles en general y los efectos radiantes de eso en los derechos de las mujeres y el juez Ginsburg. Hay todas estas figuras en la historia de Columbia que se destacan. Y justo como en todas las instituciones, necesitas estos tipos de modelos para que los estudiantes y los profesores vivan y hagan las cosas correctas a su tiempo. Así que estoy muy orgulloso de estar aquí en la Universidad de Kansas, aquí en este momento, celebrando este aniversario sexto. Bien, así que comienza con Brown. No puedes realmente entender a Brown, creo, a menos que lo veas como uno de los casos más generativos que se haya decidido por la Corte. Y por eso, quiero decir, soy uno de esos, y hay muchos, especialmente de mi generación, que fueron a la escuela de derecho, que se convirtieron en profesores de derecho, que practicaron la ley en la luz de Brown vs. Board de Educación. Y esas cosas que estás haciendo que parecen muy lejanas o despegadas de Brown fueron en realidad muy conectadas. Así que cuando me convertí en profesor de derecho en 1973 en la Universidad de Michigan y estaba buscando algún tema en el que pudiera escribir un artículo, tal vez podría ser interesante. Y como saben aquellos de ustedes en las escuelas de derecho, típicamente empiezan a enseñar en la ley sin ninguna experiencia, ninguna especialización. Fui directo de la escuela de derecho, directo de la clerkía de la Cámara Suprema. Y me pregunté, ¿qué sé de nada? Mi padre había dirigido un pequeño periódico de la ciudad cuando estaba clerkía para el juez general Burger, había un caso involucrado la regulación de la transmisión de la primera enmienda, trabajé en esa opinión y pensé, "Primera enmienda, eso es realmente yo". Y así me lancé a escribir un artículo sobre el tratamiento diferencial de la transmisión y los medios de comunicación en print, un artículo que aún estoy muy orgulloso de. Y eso se convirtió en mi primer artículo y la base para mi tesis futura. El punto principal es que muy rápidamente aprendes, a medida que te conviertes en experto en libertad de expresión y prensa, que las grandes doctrinas sobre libertad de expresión y libertad de prensa, de hecho, aquellas que definen el concepto de libertad de expresión y libertad de prensa de América hoy en día, hasta hoy, fueron formados del movimiento de derechos civiles después de Brown. De hecho, el gran primero de la primera enmienda, uno de los primeros profesores de la primera enmienda, Harry Calvin, escribió un libro sobre el tema de cómo los afroestadounidenses habían ganado por la primera enmienda un alcance de protección que había perdido por grupos anteriores menos simpatéticos con el sistema judicial. Si vas a áreas de la Cuarta Enmienda, Miranda, el derecho al consejo, si vas a las decisiones de redistrictamiento y el voto, si vas a casi cualquier lugar que busques, los efectos de Brown se sintieron. Fue un enorme ideal que se puso antes de este país y antes del mundo. Dicho esto, debemos no discriminar contra la gente basado en la raza oficialmente, legalmente, pero también debemos luchar por una sociedad integrada. Ahora, uno de los grandes debates hasta hoy, o especialmente en la última década, ha sido el voto de que Brown realmente no era tan Brown. El juez general Roberts toma el voto de que Brown era realmente acerca de detener la discriminación y eso es todo. Lo que acabo de decir es que creo, y comparto las creencias de aquellos que creen, que Brown era acerca de más que eso. Era acerca de comprometer la sociedad a alcanzar sus ideales, lo que no solo involucraba no discriminar en base a la raza, sino en realidad luchar por una sociedad integrada y superar las injusticias del pasado. Así que mi visión es que Brown, y creo que es indiscutible, Brown tenía este tipo de ideal resonante que era acerca de los valores de América y valores que afectaron innumerables áreas. Y eso es lo que creo que necesitamos mantener en mente hoy. Así que mientras Brown se implementaba, sabemos que hubo enormes esfuerzos en los años 50, los años 60, el llamamiento de la guardia nacional, el uso de herramientas como el búsquedero, una tremenda cantidad de litigios se produjo en todo el país. Sabemos que a medida que los años 60 llegaban a su fin y los años 70 comenzaron, había algún sentido de frustración de que los ideales no habían sido alcanzados, que los remedios no habían sido efectos, y que todavía había limitaciones que eran injustas en la capacidad de las personas afroestadounidenses, hispanas, nativas, que sienten que tienen que ser iguales en la sociedad. Así que había alguna frustración. En la cara de eso, las universidades, especialmente las escuelas de derecho, pero las universidades, programas de undergraduate y luego muy rápidamente otras escuelas también, escuelas médicas, en todo el país de los Estados Unidos en la parte de atrás de los 60, pero realmente en la parte de antes de los 70, abrieron programas de acción afirmativa. Y esto no fue solo un par de instituciones, esto fueron todas las instituciones, públicas y privadas. Y el pensamiento fue, "Estamos avanzando demasiado lentamente y necesitamos tener escuelas profesionales integradas, programas educativos para tener una sociedad que Brown y todo lo que se le apuntó compromete a nosotros". Y las escuelas y universidades comenzaron a tomar en cuenta la raza en las admisiones. Ahora, como he señalado varias veces, esto no fue la primera vez que los oficiales de admisiones tomaron en cuenta factores otros que no son los resultados SAT o los resultados LSAT o los resultados de la calificación de los puntos de equilibrio. Durante años, décadas, las universidades y los colegios habían tomado en cuenta la geografía. ¿De dónde eras? Porque como señaló Washington al final del siglo XVIII, para que Estados Unidos tenga una sociedad viable, las universidades, él pensó, deberían llevar a los estudiantes de todas las diferentes colonias y estados diferentes porque era importante que la gente fuera educada juntas para superar los estereotipos, los biases, los prejuicios que podrían surgir de otra forma y hacer una política de cuerpo coherente menos posible. Muchas otras características han sido tomadas en cuenta, por supuesto, el legado, si tus padres eran familiares, la habilidad atlética, todo tipo de características especiales de lucha, de coraje, un sentido de compromiso con el aprendizaje, experiencias de viaje, todas estas cosas que han sido tomadas en cuenta durante décadas. Y a eso se le agregó la raza para conseguir un cuerpo estudiantil diverso. Así que estos programas fueron adoptados en todo el país y se convirtieron en la norma en la educación superior americana. Entonces se desafiaron en la parte de atrás de los 70 en el caso de Baki. La Universidad de California Davis Medical School había dejado un cierto número de asientos en la clase de los estudiantes afroestadounidenses y eso fue desafiado como inconstitucional bajo la Ley 14. El argumento fue, "Estás tomando en cuenta la raza y lo estás usando para favorecer a los estudiantes afroestadounidenses, los candidatos, sobre los estudiantes caucasianos". Eso es discriminación en base a la raza y, por lo tanto, inconstitucional bajo la Ley 14. Fue a la Cámara Suprema, la Corte se dividía muy mal y el juez Powell, como casi todos conocen, escribió la opinión decisiva. Fue la opinión que todos los universos siguieron después de eso, hasta el caso involucrado en Michigan, con el que estaba involucrado, que fue decidido en 2003, que luego estableció una racionación un poco diferente, pero todavía dentro de los parámetros, creo, del punto de vista de Powell en Baki. Y el juez Powell dijo dos cosas, tres cosas que fueron muy, muy importantes. Él dijo, "No se pueden tener bajo la Constitución, la Ley 14, cuestiones de quotas". Así que en ese sentido, la Universidad de California Medical School de Davis violó la Constitución al dejar de lado un número específico de asientos y tomar a los estudiantes sin considerar sus calificaciones. No se pueden tener cuestiones de quotas, eso se convirtió en la norma. También, él dijo, "No se pueden involucrar en la acción afirmativa", es decir, tomar en cuenta la raza como factor, incluso si no es un cuestiones de quotas. No se puede hacer eso si su propósito es rectificar las injusticias pasadas del país con respecto a los afroestadounidenses, los hispanos y los nativos americanos. No se puede tratar de rectificar esos errores pasados tomando en cuenta la raza. Si ese es su propósito, es inconstitucional. Sin embargo, él dijo, "Si lo haces porque crees en los beneficios de la diversidad educativa, crees que tus estudiantes deben ser educados en un entorno racialmente diverso, etnicamente diverso, porque eso hará que las clases mejores, eso hará que el aprendizaje mejore, eso hará que los graduados mejores. Si todo está envuelto en una misión educativa, eso es constitucional". Ahora, me convertí en director de la Universidad de Michigan Law School en 1987. Y sabía que si alguna vez di un discurso y dijera, "La Universidad de Michigan y la Universidad de Michigan Law School orgullosamente toman en cuenta la raza y la etnología y construyen un cuerpo estudiantil diverso porque este país tiene dos siglos de esclavitud, leyes de Jim Crow y otras formas de segregación y discriminación y injusticia, y eso es incorrecto y necesitamos superarlo. Y es por eso que hacemos esto aquí". Sabía que esa política sería inmediatamente desafiada y bajo la opinión de Powell, que como dije, era considerada como la opinión decisiva, poniendo en pie la ley de la Constitución, que esa política de la Universidad de Michigan Law School sería derribada como inconstitucional. No podía decir eso. En cambio, como todos hasta hoy, diría, "Hacemos esto como Powell dijo que podíamos porque creemos que los beneficios educativos de tener un cuerpo estudiantil racialmente diverso, un cuerpo estudiantil etnicamente diverso son tan importantes, es nuestra decisión educativa". Así que tienes que entender el contexto histórico involucrado de lo que ha ocurrido aquí, lo que todavía ocurre hoy, para entender dónde estamos y lo que debemos hacer en el futuro. Ahora, durante los años 80, durante ese tiempo después de Baki, cuando todas las universidades en todo el país de los Estados Unidos practicaron la acción afirmativa como definida y como Powell la permitió, durante ese tiempo, había un cambio en el país. Y eso fue representado por la administración Reagan y por otros movimientos dentro de la sociedad que desafiaron muchos de las doctrinas judiciales, los resultados judiciales, las decisiones políticas, la legislación, las políticas, los valores que salieron del 1960. Así que había una reacción nacional contra muchos de esas cosas. Grupos opositores a la acción afirmativa reunieron ánimos y el Departamento de Justicia y el Departamento de Educación empezaron a investigar ciertas escuelas y universidades para ver cómo estaban haciendo sus políticas de acción afirmativa. Y todos estábamos conscientes de que la discriminación del gobierno estaba siendo llevada a la cabeza en este tema. Después de que me convertí en director y en este entorno, pedí a un grupo de profesores a revisar la política de la escuela de derecho en la Universidad de Michigan, para asegurarse de que estaba en acuerdo con la opinión de el juez Powell en Baki. Hizo eso, en realidad, votó en la política. Esa política fue la que se mantuvo por la Cámara Suprema en 2003 en el caso de Gruder. Así que eso sucedió. Luego de eso, en la parte de antes de los 90, como el grupo opositor a la acción afirmativa fue por todo el país buscando lugares para demandar y presentar iniciativas de voto, uno de los primeros esfuerzos de litigio por el Centro de Derechos Individuales, como se llamaba, fue después de la Universidad de Texas Law School. Y ese caso se llama Hopwood. And that case is called Hopwood. They challenged legally the admissions policies and practices of the University of Texas Law School with respect to affirmative action. The University of Texas Law School had a distinctive and unfortunate way of proceeding in their admissions office. They had a two-track system. If you were African American, Hispanic, Native American, you went to a different admissions committee than if you were of a different race or ethnicity. And then they kind of put it all together. But there was a sense that they had divided up the process. So this was challenged as inconsistent with the Constitution and the general practice of affirmative action was challenged as well. I served as an expert witness in the case on behalf of the University of Texas Law School for the purpose of explaining or testifying to the educational benefits of affirmative action, which I did. That case resulted in a stunning Fifth Circuit decision, the Hopwood case. Because the Hopwood, the majority of the court of the Fifth Circuit struck down the University of Texas Law School practice as unconstitutional. And immediately, across the country, colleges and universities were put on notice that there was a new and quite successful, at least in early terms, effort to strike at the policies of affirmative action and that they had won. That was followed by an even more resounding victory of those who opposed affirmative action in the Prop 209 initiative in California in which the Constitution was amended to ban affirmative action in the state, all state universities. That passed and that was an even more striking and chilling message that people were very actively opposing this, using all means within the legal system and the political system, and that they were achieving real success. To this day, of course, the University of California system cannot engage in affirmative action and the consequences have been devastating. Shortly after Prop 209 was passed, Ball Law School at Berkeley had two African American students in the entry class. Prop 209 was followed by an initiative in the state of Washington. Okay, it looked like this was going to be the beginnings of a movement across the country reversing what universities and colleges had done since the late 60s, early 70s. I became president of the University of Michigan in 1997. Within a few months, I was told by my legal counsel, "You have two big problems coming your way. One is that there's an allegation in the NCAA that there was an illegal booster behind the Fab Five success basketball." You play basketball here? And the other was that the University of Michigan was probably going to be the next target of the anti-affirmative action groups in Center for Individual Rights and that happened. So the lawsuits were filed. One against the law school policy, one against the undergraduate policy. Now, you need to put it in context. This was not, as I've tried to indicate, a time in which there was broad popularity to affirmative action in universities. A wave was going across the country, beginning with Hopwood, gathering momentum in California and sweeping back across the country. Question was what to do. And then there was a very unfortunate, I didn't know about it until this happened, until the litigation happened. But in the undergraduate program, because there were so many applicants, the admissions office had developed the use of the grid. And the grid gave points for certain factors that go into the decision whether to admit students. Obviously, grade point averages get X points. SAT scores get Y points. And being African American, Hispanic, Native American got certain Z points. And this had been obtained by an opponent of affirmative action, a person on the faculty at Michigan, and had been disclosed and this ended up on the front page of the New York Times. "University of Michigan uses points based on race as well as other factors to determine whether or not students are admitted." So these two suits were combined. I made the decision then that we would not settle the case, that we would litigate the case and that we would litigate it as far as we needed to in order to make the case that I believe we needed to make to support the policies. I have to say, within the University of Michigan's traditions, dealing with racial justice, dealing with diversity has an absolutely strong historic value of that great public university. And I have to say that the people who were responsible, both faculty and the regents of the university, I think, were fully behind, almost fully behind, this effort to defend the policies as constitutional. And that was a major decision because, as I said, it was not popular in many places and because it was going to be very expensive. Litigation costs can be enormous. And as you very quickly learn, being a defendant is not a nice place to be in law. Now, I made a decision that I want to talk about this case just a little bit because it really is, I think, the formation of my views about all of this. I felt that we had to do a number of things in order to win this case. I felt, first of all, we had to link it to Brown and not to Baki. People didn't understand Baki. They didn't know really Powell's opinion. Universities did generally and it had become part of the culture. But people didn't resonate with Baki as one of the greatest decisions of the 20th century. People do relate to Brown. As I said, there's disagreement about what Brown's all about. Was it just to stop official discrimination or was it to have the society work towards a broader set of ideals? I think most Americans are very proud of what Brown, in support of education, did and said about this country. And therefore, whenever we talked about affirmative action, we were going to talk about Brown. In the litigation, the second decision was that we weren't going to just talk about this in the form of litigation. We were going to talk about this publicly. I was going to give speeches about this. I was going to go on media. I was going to do interviews. We had to take this outside the bounds of the courtroom and into public discussion and debate. We had to explain it. And that was important, I felt, because there were so many distortions about what universities and colleges were doing. And that's a hard decision. It may sound easy to do. But every time you're in litigation, any good lawyer will tell you as a defendant, "You are never to say anything about this issue in any public setting whatsoever." The reason is because whatever you say will be seized by the other side and used in the litigation against you. And my feeling was this is just too important to follow that advice. Then I said, "We had to make this not just a case about University of Michigan and its policies, a law school or beyond. It had to be about universities all across the country. We had to make the case that all institutions of higher education in America basically believed that this was critically important to do." And that wasn't easy to achieve, actually, because it's always a dangerous thing to say, "We do what these people who are being sued also do and we do exactly the same thing." Because your general counsel is going to say and your trustees and regents are going to say, "You just invited litigation against us." And that's not good. But eventually, to my, I'm very proud about this, universities, colleges all across the United States stood up together with Michigan in fighting this attack. But it couldn't be not only just about Michigan, not only just about colleges and universities across the country. It had to be about American society. It had to say, "What has happened since Brown is that every single institution in the United States, every sector has embraced, not fulfilled, but embraced the vision of Brown to try to achieve an integrated society, to try to achieve a more just society. And whether it's the private sector, corporations, businesses, nonprofit sector, foundations, the media, religion, wherever you look in America, people are working to try to build a more integrated environment. And you need to make the case that if you start unraveling this effort one place, you will unravel it everywhere." So that case was very hard to make. It was hard to make because, in fact, very few, almost no political figures would stand up and defend these policies. And I'm sorry to tell you that I think that's even true today. Talking about race and affirmative action in human America is not something that public figures, political people in politics view as a safe thing to talk about. So when I asked a lot of people to speak about this, they didn't speak. But I had to get somebody. I had to find somebody who would break this. And I asked Gerald Ford, who was a graduate of the University of Michigan, if he would write an op-ed defending affirmative action at the University of Michigan and in universities and colleges across the country. We needed a moderate political person, even better, a moderate Republican person, who once told me amazingly, and he had no idea when he appointed Ed Levy, Attorney General, what his political party was. Says a lot about political life now and then. And to mine, I just will always admire Gerald Ford for this. He said he would. And I said, "Look, we'll draft something for you and work with your speech writers." He said, "No, don't worry. I know what to say." And he wrote this op-ed in the New York Times in which he said basically the following. "I played center in the University of Michigan football team. And one of the teams we played was Georgia Tech. We came to Ann Arbor to play. And we had one black player on our team. And the Georgia team said, 'If that black player is on the field, we will not play.'" And to our shame, that black player was not allowed to play. And he said, "That has followed him ever since and that's what America has faced and there's still more healing to be done in America and we can't afford not to do these things." That was a tremendous moment because it opened up other people to be able to speak. So we went to General Motors Steel case and they worked on a brief along with dozens of major companies who said affirmative action in universities and colleges is critical, critical to our future, critical to America's future. And then I was having lunch with David Halberstam, somebody he put me in touch with. I was explaining what we were trying to do and he said, "Have you ever thought about the military?" And there's this person who worked in the Ford administration named Cannon. I think he's on the Annapolis, the Navy Board of Advisors. And I went to see Mr. Cannon. He came to see me and he said, "Yes, of course, we should stand up for this. We have a military that is highly diverse, more diverse than most parts of society. And if we don't have an officer corps that's diverse through the academies, then we're in big trouble and the national security and defense is at stake." And so some former generals and military people signed a brief defending affirmative action in universities because the military academies needed it, the military needed it, and the defense needed it. Many people think that that was the brief that really affected the result of the case. Point was, you have to see any of these policies in a bigger, broader context. And then my feeling was we had to take this all the way to the Supreme Court and we did. And we won in the Gruder case, five to four. It was a very fine decision, a wonderful decision, illuminating, strong, the first solid judicial decision with five solid votes supporting the constitutionality of affirmative action, more or less in the framework of Justice Powell's opinion, but with some nuance to it. It did have something that I found and I still find odd and that is a 25-year horizon which the court seemed to say, "Well, this should be good, but maybe only for 25 years." I just don't know of any other Supreme Court case interpreting the Constitution that put a kind of time limit on the principle. But fortunately, we're still within that 25 years so we don't know what it really will mean. Following that decision in Gruder, we've had then a number of things happen. Several states have now done what California has done, including Michigan, and I'll come back to that in a second, of voting in the ballot initiatives or in legislation to ban affirmative action in the state. I think it was six or eight that had done that. So that's been very important. Meanwhile, different groups have continued suing. After the Hopwood decision, remember that from the Fifth Circuit and before the Gruder decision, when the University of Texas, under the Hopwood decision, which applied to them, when they could no longer practice affirmative action by taking race and ethnicity into account, the state decided that it's so important to have the universities integrated that they would adopt another program, which was called the 10% solution, which goes like this. Unfortunately... Unfortunately, but the reality is there is segregation de facto, to be sure, in Texas K-12 schools according to race. That means if you take the top 10% of every high school in the state, automatically to the state colleges and universities, you will get a diverse student body. And that's what they did. After Gruder, the university said, "We like the 10% solution, but we would like to have more diversity, and we're going to use the Gruder process on top of the 10% solution." So they did that. That was challenged in a case called Fisher, which was decided by the Supreme Court a year ago, in which the issues were quite muddled, but essentially, the Supreme Court, again, in the Fisher case, said, "Gruder is still good law. It is the law. It is the interpretation of the Constitution." But there were some things in the tone of the case that suggest that maybe there's a shift in the way the court is prepared to evaluate the constitutionality of these programs. And by that, I mean there's more than an intimation in the opinion that the Supreme Court or courts will not just take universities' statements that they need to take race into account and ethnicity in order to get a diverse student body. Maybe there are other means you can use to get that. And if you haven't tried them or thought about them and so on, you have not met your constitutional burden of showing that this is really the only way in which you can get diversity. So there may be greater burdens on universities to justify what we have been doing. But we don't know yet. So far, the US government, Department of Education, Department of Justice have said Fisher is basically Gruder. But other people are saying Fisher is limiting Gruder, at least in the process. And we just don't know. It was sent back, the case was sent back to the district court in Texas, and that's where it still is. Finally, after the Gruder case in Michigan, the group post-affirmative action put an anti-affirmative action initiative on the ballot, banning all affirmative action in the state of Michigan in higher education and public employment. And it passed 58% to 42%. That constitutional amendment banning affirmative action in the state of Michigan is now being challenged and before the United States Supreme Court in the Shutey case. And that's a complicated, that's got a... It doesn't really go to the question whether Gruder and Fisher are still good law in the majority's view of the Supreme Court. It's a different problem. Can the voters amend the Constitution to choose not to engage in affirmative action? As I said, it's a complicated problem, which I'd be happy to talk about a bit later. So I'd like to talk now about just a few of the, what I think of as myths about affirmative action. Because we're still now in this period where we have Brown, we have Justice Powell's opinion blocking, we have the Gruder case. And all that that means enlighten me that. And then we have Fisher, which supports, but maybe modifies just a little bit. And now, you know, where are we going? There clearly is a lot of debate about affirmative action. So we are not in a situation where the issue is resolved, it's over, and we can just go on with life as it is. So there are several arguments that I want to raise and answer. One is an argument that affirmative action is no longer needed in any form. We're in a post-racial society. It's just not necessary. We have a president and attorney general, both of whom are Columbia College graduates. We're African-American, and they show that you don't need affirmative action anymore. In the past few months, enough data has been revealed through Department of Education surveys, K-12 education in the United States, through other materials that have been developed. It seems to me it's simply impossible to claim that race no longer matters in America's society. The numbers are quite striking. Many school districts are more segregated today than they were in 1960. That's true in Detroit. Said to be true in New York State, which is said also to be in this recent report out of the UCLA Center on Civil Rights Equality. It's the most segregated state, the most segregation in the United States. And it is more segregated than ever before. A third of African-American children... No, I think it's even... The numbers are always just striking. Just take it for a fact. A very high percentage of African-American children go to basically all black schools. And a very large percentage of white students go to all-white schools. We still have a very segregated system. And we also have, as I will claim in a moment, effects of a history that we are not in any sense freed from. And I'm going to come back to that. It is said about affirmative action that not only do we not need it anymore, but there are other ways to do it. Usually, it's said, "Go look just at the financial neediness of students, low-income students, and you'll get both things. You'll get justice for kids who don't come from rich families and therefore able to take test prep and all the advantages, and you'll have racial diversity." All the scholarship I know of that's been done on this says that if all you know about an applicant is that they come from a low-income family, the odds are you are hitting another white student. Don't get me wrong. We are completely in favor of having diversity across income spectrum in America. We want and go after kids from low-income families as a matter of social justice and opportunity. But that is not how you're going to get racial and ethnic diversity. It's because of the population numbers at each level. It is sometimes said that African-American students, actually Hispanic state of America, would actually be better if there were affirmative action. Because then they'd go to colleges and universities where they were better prepared to compete, and they would feel better about themselves and do better and so on. This is called the mismatch theory. And a lot has been made of this in the last year. And there are many things to say about this. I've always liked the statement of Colin Powell, who said at one point on a radio show about this, "You know, one of the things that happens if you go..." It's known. The better school you go to, the more income you're likely to make in your lifetime." So he said, "You know, on that fact, I think I just tried to get to the best school I could. And then I used the extra income I made to hire a psychiatrist to help me with my problems that I might have from having been in this world." But the main point is to be real about how people, how this whole process works and about how people should be free to make their own decisions. Remember, this is just a factor. Maybe it's more of a factor than, on average, than for other groups who get a factor. It's still within an incredibly talented group of people at all levels. So this is not admitting people who can't do the work. Admissions offices again and again and again say, "We only admit students who can do the work." It's within that pool of people who have all the talents to succeed that we try to get a racially and ethnically diverse environment. And any of us knows that we want to be in the best school we can get in. I mean, that's just a fact of life. We want to be challenged. We benefit from being challenged. And that should be allowed to happen. It's then said, "You know, it wouldn't matter if affirmative action were declared unconstitutional because if that happened, you'd still find a way to get a racially, ethnically diverse student body. Because you'd still kind of know zip codes, and because, you know, our school system is segregated de facto, you'll be able to identify, and there'll be other indicators. And so you'll be able to get a diverse student body." And the answer to that is, that's cheating. If the Supreme Court of the United States says it is unconstitutional under the Fourteenth Amendment to ever consider race or ethnicity in admitting students, and then you do it in contravention to that fundamental law by using surreptitious means to identify people, you will be found out. You should be found out, and it should be disgraced. This is the fundamental law the land we're talking about. This is the basic law. This is the Constitution. And you do not talk casually about how you can get around a Supreme Court interpretation of the Constitution. So it matters. And what we know is that wherever affirmative action has been abandoned or abolished, the amount of diversity has fallen very significantly, 30, 40, 70%. In the case of the University of Michigan, very after the ban was put on affirmative action in the Constitution in California and elsewhere, it's always said, "You know, you're doing it too late. The real problems are in the K-12, and by the time comes to universities, you really can't have an impact." And my view has always been, we have to do our part. It's terrible that our educational system in the K-12 is still segregated in many respects. And, but, you know, the fact that we can fix that doesn't mean we shouldn't try in higher education. Now I want to turn to the last point. All that I've described has a theme in it, two themes. One theme is our country has a history that must be addressed. Not because the country was bad in the past with slavery and general laws and official segregation and de facto segregation, not because it's bad in the past and we need to correct, but because the effects of that continue on through generations. One of my distinguished colleagues at Columbia, historian and political scientist Ira Kats Nelson, wrote a book a couple of years ago, which I strongly recommend, called "When Affirmative Action Was White." And in that book, he talks about how the many wonderful programs that were adopted by the Congress after World War II to promote education, the veterans' bills, to promote housing ownership, mortgages assistance programs that were set up, all the things that go into job creation, education, ownership, development of your wealth, all of those things were done in a context in which the reality was African-Americans, Hispanic Native Americans, were not given the same opportunities by institutions across the country as whites. And that has an cumulative effect over time. And we have to see this as something that Brown, I believe, told us, instructed us, inspired us to see that this had to be dealt with. The other theme is that we can only talk about this, about what colleges and universities do all across the country, in terms of educational diversity, not in terms of the history or the context. And that, to me, makes no sense at all. And in a way, it decontextualizes everything we're doing, removes the substance, the substance, sheds the ideals that are really at stake here. And the more this is talked about in this kind of vague and almost banal framework of, yes, we really like educational diversity, but we don't say more about it. We don't talk about what that really means and how bringing people together from different races and ethnicities and geographies and all kinds of different, different parts of the income spectrum and people from around the world bringing everybody together is critically important because of how the world has been structured and how people have lived in it and how we live in it now and how we're likely to live in it in the future, unless you can talk about that in a meaningful way, both in the sense that it's thrilling to confront people whom you think are different or are different and have different life experiences and live with them and learn with them. That's thrilling, but also that there is a matter of deep justice that is at stake here. Not to be able to talk about that latter part is to really empty our discussion of meaning. And so that's when I think we really have to think about how we talk about this in a more meaningful way. And the civil rights movement around Brown's work of education and that flowered in the years afterward was a context for understanding what we were, what we had done, what we were doing, and what we had to do. And we need a new way of talking about this now, like that. We need a new civil rights movement in the sense that we need a focus, a framework, and a way to address all of this. And educational diversity doesn't do it. So that's the point. And the last is that in a world that is increasingly global, where we're interconnected by economies, by communication systems, especially the internet, what this country has done following Brown is a matter of enormous... It's an enormous achievement, and it is something we should be proud of. And other countries look to the United States. The more I travel around the world because of globalization and Columbia University and how to make us more global, the more I encounter every other country struggling with these kinds of issues in their own context. And they look to the United States in many respects for leadership on this. And it's just an unfortunate matter if we lose that really moral and justice imperative that has guided us since Brown. Thanks very much.
Wow, that was a lot of comments. So we have about 15 minutes or so for Q and A. And so I'll field questions. We'll have some conversation now.
Well, you mentioned in your discussion of the Fisher case that the court exhibited perhaps a more rigorous form...
My read would also suggest that the notion of diversity as a sufficiently compelling governmental interest to sustain affirmative action in higher education was at least drawn into question. And so I was wondering if you might comment on whether you think diversity, the diversity rationale will long survive, especially perhaps in light of the parents-involved case out of Seattle? And then a sort of follow-on, whether that might be resonating with your point about justice that you closed with, that if proponents of affirmative action might not be better off making the case for justice as opposed to defending it as a means of achieving higher education diversity?
Yes, right. Well, I mean, I find the Fisher case problematic to interpret, as you may all agree. That is, just looking at the language without trying to read it anything, I see, "We affirm Roder." At the way you feel, reading at the tone of it, I think one begins to see, I don't know quite how to put this, some, as I've said before, some greater burden that universities have to meet in explaining why this and not other techniques for admissions and getting diversity. And I think, as you say, some greater explanation and some greater proof about why this benefits people, as you say, in terms of diversity, education, etc. So I think it's, I myself just don't know. I mean, I don't know what this means for, I do think the following. I think that we don't have as rich a way of talking about this, educational diversity, as we should to make it more compelling. Now, you can, there are people who have done social science work on this, and I respect that, people who are educated in diverse classrooms and environments, learn more, are more tolerant, they, you know, there's efforts to prove this. I think that's important, I'm glad that that happens. I feel, I'm more of the mind that we live in a kind of ongoing conversation as a country, and we kind of understand what we're doing in a sense. Social science is critically important, it can support it or deny what we're saying, but we need to have a robust way to talk about our values. And I'm worried that because of the variety of factors, the unpopularity of affirmative action, the fatigue with dealing with race, the Powell opinion, I'm worried that we're continuing to talk about this in ways that have drained it of meaning. The other thing, because that the, what I said in the Fisher cases, we were thinking about how to write the brief, how to conceive this, how to talk about it. Okay, you have Powell's opinion, you can talk about educational benefits, but you can't talk about correcting the injustices in the past. But if you're going to talk about educational benefits, don't you have to talk about the context in which this, the people are being educated? I mean, otherwise, it's just kind of meaningless. And so it comes through the back door of the other, it's impossible to separate them, and we tried to do that, but my sense is that still has not happened fully. No, I mean, not my sense, I believe it has not happened fully. That goes to your last question, do I think that that is being gradually turned into a bloodless and therefore not very powerful legal argument or policy argument concept? And can we revive it? I think we can revive it if we are more bold or bolder and talk about the huge problems we still have, that are partly of our own making now, but partly of this legacy of decades and generations of what the society has done. So that's my, that's my argument, that's my pitch.
Thank you for an interesting talk. I want to go back to the social science data that you just referred to, and thinking about particularly Rick Limbert's work, which was part of the case. The argument that I find really persuasive, so I've always wondered sort of how the decisions got made for it to be less emphasized, that especially in the context of broader society, that people are more likely to hire doctors and lawyers, lawyers particularly, that are of their own race. And so the lawyer argument can be about access to justice for racial minorities. And so you've got all of this evidence that you need to have a very diverse bar in order to open doors to the civil justice system, which we know has lots of racialized barriers. So, and it's there in the research, and so did you, just strategically, how did that argument sort of fall away? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think of it as falling away. I mean, I, I just can't remember exactly, you know, where things were put. You always have to be careful when you, in litigation, when you rely on social science data for the obvious reasons, that people, that's disputed, and, you know, how do you argue in a court about the validity of these things? Just much harder, the context doesn't lend itself to debates about that. But on the other hand, we put in, I'm just blocking, Pat, the psychology...
Her's a jury.
We had her work, Nancy Cantor was my provost, was very keen on all this, and so I would have thought that Rick's work was there, but you're saying it wasn't.
Well, he served the court and in the oral argument about, because you have the social science, but then you have this justice claim, so you have both the science and the normative justice claim.
Yeah. I mean, first of all, I'm glad you raised that, I mean, it's a really nice point, and of course, I really admire Rick and all that he's done. I just can't remember how, you know, the oral argument or the briefs went exactly on that score of incorporating it or not.
In England, the entire debate about educational inequality tends to take place in terms of social class. I wonder whether you would actually get more support for affirmative action in terms of race if you coupled it with affirmative action in terms of income?
Yeah. So this is a very, very hot topic here, and, and, I mean, there's, I have several sort of reactions. I don't favor the thought of, and I'm not saying you're saying this, I'm just talking about the relationship generally between income, class, so on, social class, and issues of race. I do not favor using income and class without talking about race, because, on an argument that it's too dangerous to talk about race, therefore, let's, and we can get it just as effectively if we talk about class. I'm really for confronting where we are and need to be as a country on the issues of race, and I don't think you can do that by only talking about class. Now, could you do it better by coupling them? I feel like the answer is yes. That is, we have, we have a lot of things to work on in the country, urban problems, inner city, I mean Detroit, where, you know, I lived nearby in Detroit, I'm still on the Cressley Board, was very much involved in Detroit. I mean, Detroit is a, I mean, this is a, this is a national problem, enormous dimensions to have a city where I think fifty percent of the population is illiterate and a large number of people are, go hungry. I mean, it's really, really stunning, the fact that this would exist in America. And, and I do think that all the things, there are urban lives, social policies around this, highway systems, architecture, zoning, dividing school districts, using property taxes as a basis for financing public school systems, et cetera, et cetera, all race, obviously, is all mixed in and important to talk about in a, as a whole. And maybe that's a better way to get a broader public discussion going about this. So I would, on the face of it, I am in favor of that.
You made a point that when you were talking about admissions, and you said, you know, Brown is the law of the land, and that we have to follow the Constitution and the Supreme Court laws, and I completely agree. But there's only a small segment of institutions of higher education that have selective admissions. Most don't. And I guess I would argue that this problem of following Brown or following the legacy is a problem for K through twelve education is no longer desegregating, institutions of higher education that have open access are not necessarily making progress on this either. So why is, why is this one segment not supposed to violate, I mean, shouldn't use race or shouldn't violate the law of the land, but everyone else is allowed? You know, we haven't, we don't desegregate schools anymore, for example. We don't bus kids, we let K through twelve schools go ahead and be desegregated. So why is that not challenged by the courts or by people?
Well, because people tried and lost. I mean, really, I mean, for example, in nineteen seventy-four, I think I've got the year, somebody here is a comma professor, I'm sure, when was Rodriguez versus San Antonio?
Seventy-three.
Forty, seventy-three. So San Antonio versus Rodriguez, five to four decision, right? Is the property tax, is education a fundamental right? Is the property tax system financing public education consistent with the Fourteenth Amendment? Answer, yes, it is consistent. If that vote had gone the other way, I mean, I looked into this like a decade ago, and I know this is a very, very complicated area, everything, that's the problem with knowledge is, as soon as you look into something, it becomes a hell of a hard and complicated issue. It's important to stay away from it, you know? So I know lots have gone after state constitutions, and even when they won, it's hard to get the money over, and even when the money comes over, it's not clear that it does anything, you know? I really do understand this is really complicated. On the other hand, if, I just can't help but believe that if Rodriguez had come out differently, five to four the other way, that it's unconstitutional to have a child's educational prospects determined by the property values in this district in which a child was born and lives, if that had been the norm, and we'd have perhaps a series of other decisions that had articulated that norm in other contexts, would that be a different world we would be facing now? So, and of course, you know, de facto segregation was challenged and, and lost.
In Detroit?
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, we, I don't have more to say.
I have a question, I have a question. One of the things I thought was interesting about how you developed the analysis, we noticed that when you took over as dean of the Law School of Michigan, you instructed the faculty to figure out a way to make sure that the policy was in line with Powell's opinion, and this ultimately sort of put the focus on diversity. The way you end the analysis, though, you express some reservations about how far diversity can really take, you had a longing for justice, really, because it's a bit more substantive. So I just want you maybe to expand on what we do with that, right? Because one way to think about current realities is, you know, that we have this, so to speak, post-racial ethos that people talk about, and we're all breathing the same breath, and it places certain kinds of constraints, we would see, and one of the kinds of arguments we could make, which is precisely why the diversity argument had a shot, particularly with a swing justice, who's open to the force of veterans. Is there hope for justice, right?
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, it's a, it's a powerful point. I mean, let me restate it in my own words. You want to win. I mean, one of the, one of the things about, wonderful things about the academic life, about being in a classroom, is that there's no real winning. I mean, that's not the part of the, the point is, I always say to students, how complicated can you make it? That's the question, you know? And whatever your face is a problem, you're successful if you can make it unbelievably complicated, so complicated you can't even, but when you get into, there's going to be a decision at the end of this, one way or the other, and we really believe certain things, then your arguments begin to change. Well, maybe we shouldn't make that argument because we're going to lose if we make that argument, or it's going to be risky if we make this. And that's the nature of, of life. I think my theme would be, I now feel the energy, the power, the virtue, the value of the very things we're committed to across higher education in America is gradually dissipating. And we'd better start reviving that argument in a more powerful way, or we're going to lose what we thought we had gained by being a little more banal.
Wow. Well, that is a wonderful note to end, particularly after some of the depressing stuff that we heard over at the Hall Center earlier. So let us thank President Bollinger for that.